Hi.
Hi.
Now I would also like to nominate Sarah to be the recorder or clerk for this meeting, please.
Second?
Second, second again.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, so actually we forgot to call the meeting to order, so we've called the meeting to order at six twenty nine.
Twenty nine.
Got it. So, did everyone get a chance to take a look at the minutes of January one and March thirteen? If you recall, the reason we didn't get the January one, I'm sorry, January ten minutes, was because Larissa, in her position as secretary, was taking notes and then promptly went into labor and sent her notes to Holly and now Holly has put them together. So, did anybody have any changes to the January ten?
They look good.
Okay.
I believe that we approved them.
That's second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And March thirteen? Did anyone get a, did you, did everyone get a chance to look at them and?
Yeah. Yeah.
Changes?
I mean, they approved them minutes on the March, whatever date.
Okay, second?
I'll say that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so under announcements, I will formally announce that Larissa and Margit have resigned, so we are a merry band of few brothers here.
And sisters.
Yes.
So we're down to five and how many should we have or we want to have?
A full board would be seven. So, we are always in the lookout for new members and we have had one person. Michelle Rose has said she's interested, the, if she makes it tonight, this will be her third meeting. She still needs to fill out all the forms and I think it was Judith Whiteside, who is our select board liaison, said there may be somebody coming tonight that's also interested in, but with our change of venue, it might be a little confusing.
And day.
And day, it might be a little confusing for people, so so we can, everybody still look for new members. Okay, reports, Friends and Foundation.
Well, the Foundation had their meeting first and they are working, they talked about Bridge the Gap, they added that to the agenda because they hadn't initially included it, but they are working on Bridge the Gap. They are a little behind where they were last year with Bridge the Gap, but it is, is definitely in progress now.
Um, can I ask, I know that Bridge the Gap is part of their fundraising for the library, but specifically, what is that?
I think it's the main fundraising.
Is it a mailing or how does it work?
I think it's by, by soliciting donations.
Okay, alright. So, the comedy night would not go into that kitty? The, the funds raised through the comedy night would not go into the Bridge the Gap thing?
No.
Oh, that's interesting.
No, as far as I understand, no, it's a separate entity.
Okay.
Yeah, as I understand it, that is their main fundraiser.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
So that is in the works. I think they were distracted by the gala and also besides the gala, they, it is the comedy night. So those were the main things on the agenda. Preparation for the comedy night and the gala and then they added Bridge the Gap to the agenda. And that was basically it.
Okay. And how about Friends?
Oh.
You're not done?
I knew there was some reason I came tonight.
Yes.
Okay, the Friends had a pretty long meeting, as meetings go. People signed up for book sales and to help out at the duck race. The Facebook page and website are under new supervision. The duck race is May nineteenth. And the change is that instead of putting numbers on the ducks, people, when they buy the ducks, will put their own name and phone number to simplify things. And people signed up to help with that event. The next thing they, on new business was the El Mariachi night. That is June tenth, starting at five P M. That's one of these nights, El Mariachi is very benevolent and they've sponsored a number of local groups. This will be the second time for the library, it was very successful last year, so we're looking forward to that. And Mariachi requested that people attending let the server know that they're there supporting the library. So, because the library gets a percentage of, of the take that night. Okay, and it was established on Monday, May twenties, April twenty second, that, that will be the last time to work on the book card. The book card, I was at the library yesterday, it's so overflowing.
Oh, wow.
I'm sorry, was it Tuesday? It was overflowing then. I think some of the Friends went in maybe yesterday or even today. I just hope it doesn't look as bad as it did. And the Wednesday before the book sale, Wednesday, April twenty fourth, the setup for that will start at nine thirty A M. So next week's gonna be a really busy week for the Friends with the book sale. Old Business, since the Friends clerk has resigned from that position, the, and no one else has stepped up to it, it's planned that members will alternate, each person will do a month. Michelle Rose is scheduled to do the May meeting. Under Old Business, the March book sale was very successful and we also received a lot of donations from generous townspeople. We did discuss setting up, Priscilla discussed setting up the container of materials and display items for tabling. And the Friends, she took home that banner that finally appeared and washed it. The Friends agreed to invest in a four foot folding table to be used for tabling and Priscilla said we could use Velcro to affix the banner to the table. So that was established. There's no director's report, Patrick was unavailable. And that was about it. So the Friends' main focus right now is the book sale next week.
Okay. Alright, thanks. Okay, under new men, under new business, let's talk about a meeting day and time that will work for all of us moving forward. The reason we were meeting at five thirty was because of Larissa, that she did not have childcare and her husband came home from work and, and she could do the five thirty to seven window. But that's no longer something we need to think about, so I don't remember now why we were on Wednesdays, but Wednesdays don't work for you, period? Or can you come later on a Wednesday?
So personally, I don't get home until about seven thirty on Wednesdays.
Okay.
If it's later, it's fine, I can do it. If it's earlier than that, it would not work.
Yeah.
That's only for the summer, that's through October.
Cause what I'm hoping for is that we can find a time and a day where we can hold it at the library. Because holding it in these buildings does not do us.
Yeah, I was gonna say too, it's, it always, I know, understand like rescheduling is a separate matter. Like if today, like last week, we had to cancel and then we rescheduled. But I always feel like if a board is not meeting at the place they're aboard of, it feels sketchy.
That's a good point, right? Like where'd they go? Like tonight, we could have had two other people here potentially, but you know.
And it's like, why aren't they meeting at the place they're aboard of? What's the issue? What are they hiding?
That's a good point.
And it's like, so, yeah, but and right, but right now, the library's only open late on, is it Tuesday, Wednesday?
Tuesday, Wednesday, yeah. So let's talk about Tuesday. What's your best time? Like what would make it easier for you to come here? What, not here, here, but to a meeting? Like would a seven o'clock work for you? Does that make your life better?
Uh, I actually prefer earlier, cause I'd rather, I'd actually rather come straight on my way home from work if that works for other people, instead of having to go home and then come back out.
Okay.
But that's just me.
So.
So.
I was thinking five thirty was tough for you, so it's.
By about ten minutes.
Really? So maybe six?
So, yeah, like five forty-five or six would be better. I feel like six thirty is a little on the late side.
It kinda is, yeah.
So like, cause even like I said, five forty, I know five forty-five is a weird time, but I can also, usually my work is pretty good, cause they're like, go, being on the library board is a good thing for your town, so we're, you can leave a few minutes early on those days. So, I can be there by five thirty if that's better for everyone than six.
I think in my life, I think I'd prefer six, the six on Tuesday. How does that work for everybody else? Do you prefer, I could make five thirty work, I've made it work for almost three years. So, what do you guys think?
Six would be fine for me.
Either the first or the fourth Tuesday. I mean, the Friends meet the second Tuesday and my book club meets the third Tuesday. Other than that, Tuesdays, the first or the fourth is fine with me.
Okay, how about time of day? Five thirty or six work better? You okay with five thirty?
Yeah, five thirty or six is fine.
Personally, six.
Six, I prefer as well.
Yeah.
If we're tossing a coin. Tuesdays, five thirty or six?
I don't care.
Okay.
I don't care of time. I ju, I'll have to rearrange, I'll get something to cover for me on Tuesdays, but I can do that. Don't worry about it, it's okay. We'll make it work. Tuesdays at six.
Tuesdays at six. And so it would probably be better to do the first, if we can wrangle that? Cause you said two nights don't work.
The second and third.
The second and third.
So, so the first Tuesday of the month.
So the first Tuesday of the month, but let's double check with Patrick. And if that doesn't work, we'll see.
Yeah, I, I mean, I wish the library was open late more days.
Yeah. Yep.
But I know that's in the long-term planning goals right now.
Yeah. Let me take a look at the calendar on the library website and see
if that's a good idea.
if that tells us anything that helps us.
I mean, it was a while ago, but I remember going to the library like every week after school.
Yeah.
I think it was Tuesdays though, so. So they're still open late.
Wednesdays, Tuesday till eight. Tuesdays, nine till eight.
Yeah, Wednesdays nine till eight. Yeah, I was hoping I could get to the calendar to see if there's anything regularly scheduled, but I can't get there on my phone. Doesn't help me.
Where's the calendar?
Yeah, I can see a calendar preview. But if I'm my, um, when I'm on my computer, I can get to the calendar, but on my phone, I can see.
Oh, calendar preview, okay.
Yeah, that, that doesn't help me. I can't click it and get anywhere useful.
Like, it doesn't click here to, 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 alright.
First Tuesday in May has a family story.
You're on the calendar? How'd you get there?
I went to events.
Um, where are the events? Oh, show menu.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
The little hamburger menu had an event.
Yep.
And then June, the first Tuesday doesn't have anything at night. July, they haven't filled out yet.
Okay, so it looks like
according to what I'm seeing.
First Tuesday.
Looks like the fourth is also empty if we had to change it.
Okay.
But yeah, we probably should double check with the library.
Yeah.
They might be like, what are you thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So our, our first thought was the first Tuesday of each month and the fourth would be okay. And communication will be sent out to everybody.
So that would.
Before our next meeting, cause I, my goal would be that, that in May, we'd be meeting at the library on that day.
It would be like the upcoming meetings on our agenda, say May eighth, so if it, the first Tuesday is okay, it would then be May seventh instead.
Okay.
At six, not five.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else about our meeting day or time?
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay.
My main thing was I wanted to be at the library too.
Yeah. We all did. I probably won't be here that day, it's election day, so I will be otherwise occupied. Biting my nails. So, but I, you know, Holly will be here, so you'll have a courtroom at that point.
Priscilla said something about the next Friends meeting. Why didn't she say something? She wouldn't be there and Dolores wouldn't be there because it was election day?
Oh, yeah.
Remember that?
Yeah, yeah, because they're working the polls.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there, I guess there'll still be a Friends meeting that day, but.
But that, the Friends is the second Tuesday, the first Tuesday then, what, should, there shouldn't be a conflict with the election, should it?
It's, somebody said it's May seventh and that's the election day. Let's get a calendar.
Good, first Tuesday is May seventh.
Yeah, the first Tuesday is May seventh. And Friends are on the fourteenth. Cause they meet the second Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, so I don't know what Priscilla was thinking. I don't know what she was saying. Maybe she got her dates wrong or maybe there's something that we don't know about. Yeah, but I, it's, it sounded like the, the two of them were talking about the polls.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they were, they're both working on it.
Yeah. That's funny.
Interesting.
Okay. So then, under Old Business, June twenty eighth gala update, yeah. Nothing significant, we're moving right along, you know. We're still somewhat of a holding pattern as we get the website updated. How's that going?
I, I have access to the website, so I can do it. I looked at trying to do the forms and the capture of data and their site doesn't, the underlying software doesn't lend itself to doing that, so you have to come up with a workaround. So I'm not sure what can be accomplished about having people put in their names and stuff when they buy things. Yeah, so I talked to Dale about it, I haven't gotten back to him again, cause he was busy, but we'll look at it. But, but their software is designed for libraries and putting out publications and doing things, it's not designed for commerce, which is essentially what you're doing with the.
So would you be able, will the software support allowing people to donate?
Yes, so you can do donations and.
I don't know if we want them to buy tickets.
Right.
They've gone back and forth about that.
Yeah, alright, so, so you can do donates, it, it goes through PayPal and there needs to be a PayPal account to receive it. But other than that, it's straightforward.
Okay. And are you gonna be at the gala meeting coming up, whatever day that is?
Remind me what it is.
I think it's the second Tuesday of May. Yeah, given where we are in the world or.
Yeah, that, that would, I was, I was gonna try to catch up with people next week and see if we can't get ahead of it.
Oh, did I, I made reservations. And my god, I hope I made it for the fourteenth. But I think it's the fourteenth, it's usually the same day as the Friends. And the Friends is the fourteenth, it's usually two to four
Okay.
the second Tuesday, or it depends on what was two weeks, although, so just, I will let you know. I don't think I let the group know in general, because I, it, it wasn't anything to do with the second Tuesday, it has to do with every two weeks is when we're meeting. So whatever was two weeks from our last meeting. Oh.
It should be the thirtieth, right?
No, it, it will be the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, yeah.
Cause our last meeting was the ninth.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's next week.
Yep.
Yeah, so we can.
I should put that in, okay. Alright, um, um, tabling activities through June, I think we talked about them at the last meeting and I don't think we have any new news.
Parenthetically, uh, after Priscilla sent me all those, those things, I sent her the paper that I created last year about suggestions of materials for tabling, cause that was a pretty exhaustive list, everybody agreed and she was, I thought she needed help with it after the Friends meeting, she was just sort of saying, well, we could do this or that, but we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Cause we already have a list, so I did send that to her to remind her that we had that to work with.
Alright, great, thank you. Oh, this is gonna be the funnest part of this meeting, we're gonna talk about the trustees' participation in the peeps contest. That was so very absolute, yay! It was so cute, the tiny, tiny little peeps were adorable. Yeah, you did a great job.
It was interesting, cause when I saw the picture on the library website, somebody had added two peeps to the display that I didn't put there.
No kidding?
That's so weird.
Because one of them blocked my favorite ones. Because I had three, I had like a little pe, a regular sized peep and then a mini peep and then the little duck. And it was like all three together.
Yeah.
Cause it was supposed to be like a parent and a kid and a little duck.
Yeah.
And somebody put a peep right in front of it.
You did a great job with that, thank you.
You really did.
That's what, when you, when I said duck race, that was my first thought, is it has to go down.
Yeah, yeah, it was perfect.
So, it's like, it looks simple, but it still took like four, little over four hours, I think.
Well, speaking of tabling, you know, there was a little tr, library trustees' table.
I did that on.
It was so cute, it was so perfect, thank you for doing that.
With the little books and the, there was even a little thing of bookmarks on it.
Oh my gosh!
Like I have pictures, I can show you the close-ups.
Yes, oh, do it now!
Cause I'd made sure to take pictures, cause I was like, I know, cause I don't care about getting it back or anything, obviously. It's like, what am I gonna do with it? Also, cause it's candy. Cause, have you all seen the original one? Okay, so I'll just do the close-ups.
Yeah.
Cause that was the trustees' table.
Oh my god, look at that. Oh my god.
There's like a little thing of bookmarks, there's a couple of books and a little pamphlet.
Yep. Hey, where'd it go?
No, just make sure it doesn't, if it turns off, let me know, I'll go over.
So, so what did you, what was being hidden?
Oh, um, that's in the next picture, hold on. Cause I took close-up pictures and they don't all fit in one. But that was the trustees' table. Then this one, the little.
Oh.
Parent and kid.
Very nice.
This was the parent and kid watching the race.
Oh, yeah. And then somebody put something in front of them?
Yes, in front, looking from the front.
Oh, that is too cute.
Cause I found those too, the little ones, the little peeps, so it
Yeah.
it looked like little kids.
Yeah, that is too cute.
But yeah, after you guys had talked about tabling so much, I was like, okay, there has to be a little, there has to be a little trustees' table.
It was very clever.
Absolutely.
Very well done.
Did you catch there was a W C T V duck too?
With a little camera?
Yep.
Oh my gosh!
You still have that at the station?
Oh, the regular duck. I still have the other one.
Oh, that is so cute.
Yeah, it's his little camera.
Yes, yeah, I didn't see that before, yeah.
Yeah, no, I was like, the duck race, somebody's gonna film it and, did you see that one?
I filmed with the camera and the one that, with the hat.
Oh no, this was for the peeps contest. Like the peeps display and then the W C T V duck.
The library had a peeps diorama contest, yeah.
Cause I can't leave them out. Speaking of participation and stuff like that though, I very much wanna do a duck in the duck race for the trustees.
So how does that work? What are you thinking?
I haven't quite decided how to decorate it yet, but I was thinking we should do one.
Okay.
Great idea.
I was like, especially if we're planning to be there anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
And then I'll think of some ideas and in the next couple of weeks, send out an email, cause we still have, what's it, it was May something or?
May fifteen?
May nineteen.
Nineteen.
May nineteen, so we have a little time and we, we'll have one more meeting before then, so.
Okay, great, thank you. That would be awesome. Talk a little bit about recruitment, clearly we need that now more than ever, so talk to your friends and family. Tell them how much fun we have.
Okay.
And, you know, I don't really know what Holly wanted to discuss about the library rules and patron behavior policy and meeting room policy, so we won't worry about that. Um, I do have something to discuss under twenty-four hours. I touched bases with Patrick this afternoon. So there's a plan to open the spinny this summer.
Ooh, that would be exciting.
That's awesome.
And there's been a, a couple of different configurations of hours and things. And I would very much like to be a part of a group, whether it's this group and more people or not this group or whatever, but I'd like to really make it work with the public, because it's my understanding that it's been less than successful in the past in terms of patrons coming. And the, the spinny faces a lot of challenges, as do a lot of places in onset. Parking, especially, it's the summertime and there is the parking down at the bottom of the hill, but not everybody wants to make that hike up the top of the hill. Conceivably, there's a lot of foot traffic, but I have been told that the spinny is just off the beaten path to really gain from the sort of natural foot traffic.
There is a new, I don't know how new it is, but there is a parking lot now that I don't think was in complete use last summer.
Which, which that?
Um, cause like if you're looking at Spinny and you go left past Chuck's auto, there's a parking lot right next to him now.
Yeah, it's a big one.
Yeah, the big paved one.
Yeah.
But I think of that as at the bottom of the hill.
Oh, okay.
Cause there is a hill.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and not everybody i- is, especially when you think about library patrons, necessarily aren't gonna think to park there, feel comfortable parking there and walking up that hill.
I've lived there so long, I didn't realize it was a hill.
Yeah, yeah, I've been told it's a hill, I know it's a hill. Did you have thoughts?
So I was curious as to what we would think would be successful in terms of opening it and, and having people show up. Is it regular people, is it hosting events, is it, you know, what, what, what could make it stand out as particularly a summer asset for the kind of people that are in onset?
That's a great question, and I'm bringing it up under seventy-two hours, but I'd like it to be on the agenda next meeting and Patrick will be here and anyone from the community who wants to come and talk about this can, can help us.
Cause, cause it might be a little different from like a regular library that has books and checkout and check-in and things. It might be more activity oriented, more reading oriented, more participation oriented to see how what, what might work in the environment.
Yeah, yeah, those are all good thoughts.
Yeah, cause it's this thing with how close it is to the beach. If you had like, I mean, obviously advertising what it was ahead of time, but if you had like a story time about the beach and then had it be that parent and kid and like the librarian would all go to the beach after and like do whatever they saw in the story, like build a sand castle or
Yeah.
or like walk through the water a little bit or something.
Yeah, I, I, that's a great idea.
And it's like that connects the library with the outside environment.
And I was hoping we can somehow partner with the O B A and the onset-based center itself. Don't know how, but they're fixtures in onset. And I can only imagine that that conversation would be beneficial to us in some ways. But I feel like as trustees, this is a real opportunity for us to support the library and this endeavor that has come up for us, for the library for this summer and, and do whatever we can, you know, under Patrick's guidance and our own ideas, to, to make this whatever marker of success that, that we come up with.
So it would probably be a good question for him, is how would they think it's a success? Like how are they judging? Are they judging just by how many people they see, how many books are actually checked out? Cause I know they go on that a lot.
Yeah, yeah, I know that that is a measure of, you know, if you read Patrick's report from The Eclipse, a lot of people showed up. So, you know, uh, any library would view that as, as one measure of success. And certainly it makes sense to, to see that with, there's, there's money's gonna be spent to open the spinny. And I want the town to feel as if it was money well spent.
Correct, that's right.
Are they doing the summer reading program again?
From what I've talked to with Patrick, it's, there's still a lot of maybes in the air. Um, and it's an issue, you know, money's one thing in terms of utilities, et cetera, but bodies are another issue and we only have one Miss Marcia. And so that all had And um so that all has yet to be worked out with him. But I de- I definitely, I was very excited when I heard that this was on the table. Um and so I wanted to bring you guys in on it, so that you guys are really creative and you can start thinking about it, and then when we meet again. And Patrick is is able to be here, that um, you know, it can be talked about.
Cause he'll also know more about, like for example, I just said a walk to the beach, but I'm sure that has liabilities. And that's why you'd have to consider like how that would work too. Cause what if somebody did drop their kid off and didn't stay? Then you probably couldn't take them to the beach.
But I am excited, I know that there's a lot of challenges, definitely, to opening it up, which is why it hasn't been done very much in the past. But I I would, it's just such a cool resource to have right there in onset. Um that I I would like to have it be a utilized resource. And there are no members of the public here, so. But you can say whatever you want.
No, I was just thinking on Spiny. I mean, that would take a lot, it would take a lot more coordination and figuring out departments, but I wonder if there would be a way. To let them park somewhere else and shuttle people over.
Gosh, you know, that is a good idea, and that's something that's come up, even with the gala, when we were trying to figure out the parking. It's been figured out, but that was when the conversation came up about the parking lot at the bottom of the hill. And a lot of people saying, people aren't gonna walk from there all the way to the onset bay center. Because that's not only.
All the way?
All the way. And I had this idea, and I don't know how to, I haven't tried to follow up on it, but I think it's an interesting one. Um I watch Boston Chronicle every night, and they have this tiny little segment about these two enterprising young men. At a beach community where the parking lot was a hike from the beach, and people with coolers and kids and umbrellas. You know, and they got golf carts, and they were doing it for free. But I think you could do it for free, but who is gonna do it? And where are the golf carts? This was the kid's uncle had a couple of golf carts. That he's willing to donate, but something, I think they had a trolley, the town did.
I mean, this, the bus still goes around.
Like you live in onset, but you're not in onset proper.
I miss those old trolleys, they looked really cool. But they still have a bus, but it's, I think it's hourly and it's not all the time. So I mean, I guess that would be something we could ask Gatra or something.
And this idea is actually coming from um Derek, the town administrator. So that's a conversation we could have with him. As to, cause I think transportation is a critical issue, getting people from there to here.
Because when you can park, it makes it dangerous too, cause they let, allow parking both on Dudley Square and in front of the post office. And I have always been amazed there have not been more accidents at that intersection.
Oh, you should see the intersection down where um Mark Anthony's is. And Union Street and the big trucks that park there and, yeah, there's. Onset has a lot of traffic challenges and parking challenges, that's for sure.
Do you remember the the town meeting that was held at the football field and people stood in line for hours? There was a golf cart, at least one, that came around then. And they looked at people like me, you know, who was standing with a cane and said, you wanna ride down to the field, so um.
Interesting.
I didn't take one.
You have your pride.
Yes, but they made that available to people, people did avail themselves of it, so there's a precedent to that.
Yeah, okay, thanks for that information, that's good to know.
So maybe it is just worth looking into, it's like, can we do it whenever Spiny is going to be open? Is there a way to get a more consistent um like shuttle back and forth? Like even if you had them park at the regular library?
Yeah, yeah, interesting. Yeah, there's a lot of ways to look at that, very interesting. Anything else on this topic? Okay, um then I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn?
Second.
At seven, well, that one says seven oh four. Seven oh three, thank you. Um it is not debatable, so you you moved. And Nancy seconded it, it is unanimous, or we'll vote though. Or zero zero, alright, okay, thank you.